Live on Facebook.
Bradley said not to pull those microphones towards you, leave them upright.
Keep them up.
Even if I'm ducking down. Because I read like that. Oh, that was from the camera room.
What?
The camera room has a microphone.
Oh, yeah.
No, we, nope.
Rank your, thank you.
Six thirty, Mayor.
Okay, six thirty, call the meeting to order, we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Kind of interesting, after all these years, we're surrounded by new technology, so if you're watching on TV, you probably have a much better picture than you've seen in the past, and hopefully the sound will be better. We've got all new microphones, we've got monitors up here at the table, we've got big screen TVs, so, which will be used by the council, and when we get back to having an audience again, they'll be turned around for the audience for presentations. It's been long overdue, and I'm glad I at least get to use it once. Also want to congratulate the Park Rec folks. Wyndham Park, I think, looks fantastic. I know we lost the dead pine tree that we've admired decorated for so many years, but I think they've done a great job of decorating, and I think it's only going to get better. There is a long-range plan there. And then.
Mark, excuse me, it's Michelle. Getting a lot of feedback, I don't know if people that are at home are unmuted, but I'm hearing talking and banging around, so it's hard to hear you.
Bradley, is there anything you can do about that? Okay. You need me to start over?
I got the Wyndham Park, but when you started talking about, I don't know what was up next, because.
Well, I was talking about all the new technology we have here in the council chambers, and how wonderful it is. And I was just congratulating the people, or the staff, the city Park Rec people, for what a wonderful job they've done in Wyndham Park. I also need to read a script here, which I haven't done. At six thirty, I've called the meeting to order, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council, is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so that you're easily identified. And back to some of my comments, also, I have a a script here relevant to the performance review the council did on City Manager Sarvi. On December seventh, twenty twenty, the city council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Stephen T. Sarvi, City Manager. In accordance with the governing law, at the city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the December seventh closed meeting, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Sarvi reached by the city council at the December seventh closed meeting. The conclusions. Mr. Sarvi did not request that such a meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Sarvi's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As Mayor of the city of Winona, I'll now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the December seventh closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Steve Sarvi. Mr. Sarvi has met expectations of City Manager. Mr. Sarvi continues to work to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Mr. Sarvi works well with other city employees, the public and businesses, and the city council appreciates Mr. Sarvi's service to the city and looks forward to continuing its employment relationship with Mr. Sarvi for the betterment of the Winona community. Okay, and then I have another statement here I'd like to read. This is from the Rec Department with some good cheer, I think. Since the COVID began, here's some more recent stats about the holiday season. From the Rec Department, Friendship Center staff in four separate occasions, staff has made over two thousand five hundred calls to check on welfare, mental health, and any particular needs of their members. The Friendship Center conducted two parades on the west and east end of town, and the department has conducted three Santa Parade routes. And by the way, there's another one tomorrow in the east end, I think, starting at four thirty. We've delivered over a hundred and fifty gifts to members, all donated items. The advocates have served two hundred and eighty-six individuals related to Medicare during the open enrollment period. The East Rec Center has handed out over five hundred Activity Kids to the community, it must be kits, to the community since July. They're about to begin the chore program where they'll partner with Habitat for Humanity to shovel snow for approximately forty residents. They delivered approximately two hundred and fifty Chalk the Walk sets to the community via the Fine Arts Commission. The Drive-In Series severed over, served over one thousand participants. Staff and volunteers conducted over twenty hours of buckthorn removal at Prairie Island, Bluffside Park, Sugarloaf, and Latch Island. And they, again, they created new holiday lights for Wyndham Park. Very well done, everybody. And then, let's see. One final item here. I'd like to state, this is my final meeting as your mayor, and I want to say thank you to a number of people. First, to my fellow council members. I'm very proud of the work we've done over the years. I believe together we have helped move the city forward and accomplished much good work. We've done it as a team, without always agreeing but never letting it get personal. We've been respectful and always voting to do what we think is best for the citizens of Winona. I would also like to say it's been a pleasure to work with the city staff. I had the pleasure of working with two city managers, Judy Vodway and Steve Sarvi. Starting with our City Manager, Steve Sarvi, the department heads and the rest of the city staff, none of what we've done would have been possible without your hard work. As a group, you are dedicated, hardworking, and caring. Thank you for all you do on a daily basis. I'd also like to congratulate the incoming Mayor Scott Sherman and new council members, Steve Young and Aaron Rapinski, and thank outgoing council members Paul Scholmeyer and Al Thirley for their years of service. I'd also like to thank the citizens of Winona for their trust in me and for allowing me to serve as your mayor the past eight years. It's been a pleasure and a true honor. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank my wife Kathy for her support. I could not have done this job without her. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a very happy holiday. And with that, I'll ask the City Manager if he has anything he'd like to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to wish everyone happy holidays. Have a message as well, on behalf of the entire city staff. I wish to thank Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Scholmeyer, and Thirley for your years of service and support. You have all challenged us as a staff to be better, to always strive to meet the needs of the citizens of the community, and I hope we have met your expectations. I trust you can all look back on your years of service to the community with a sense of accomplishment. On a special note, I wish to convey my deepest thanks and appreciation to our mayor. No one asked to serve during a pandemic. Yet you have epitomized the true definition of a servant leader. Right from the start, you never shied away from making the tough decisions, always making sure that you were doing what you felt was best for this community. You always led with steadiness and a sense of purpose. Our community has been well-served by your leadership. All I can say is thank you, and I hope that you all realize just what an outstanding job you have all done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thirley.
Here.
Holder.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Moving to the required public meetings, item two point one is the twenty twenty-one proposed property tax levy and proposed budget.
Public hearing, I'll declare it open and ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak. Any member of public wish to speak to the proposed tax levy and proposed budget? It'll be a short public hearing, I guess, anybody else wishes, anybody wish to speak? Last chance, anybody wishes to speak to the proposed tax levy and budget? Hearing from nobody, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll revisit that later in the agenda.
Moving on to item two point two is the Visit Winona twenty twenty-one proposed budget.
This is another public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody wishes to speak.
I would like to take a moment to speak. My name is Nicole Arasha Espinoza, and I'm the Chair for the Board for Visit Winona. I would like to start by thanking you for this opportunity to speak. I know that there is a lengthy agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to keep this short. I also know for the council members that Pat Mutter did pass along the end-of-the-year report. So, quite a bit of the information is going to be in there, in case I don't cover it. And at the end, I'll open for questions. To recap our twenty twenty successes for Visit Winona, we started off the year with the Super Bowl commercial, which Visit Winona had a very fast reaction to. The photo books that they had put out in response to that, the original print had, has already been sold, and there's actually a three hundred copy reprint that is now for sale. In addition, in quarter one, the Executive Director, our very own Pat Mutter, received the Roger Toussaint Award, which is the highest honor bestowed by the MACBB. And the remaining of our successes were really focusing on adapting to the pandemic. In order to make it through the year, we focused on using our reserves and making some hard decisions. Those included reducing staff and contractor hours, and that reduction in hours is going to continue throughout this winter. We also did make a decision to close the Visitor Center, and that closure will be closed throughout this winter as well. However, our Visitor Center merchandise is all for sale online, and we were able to attend a couple pop-up events, including some farmers' markets. And the time that the Visitor Center has been closed has allowed for some renovations, including new carpet and floor tiles being installed. It's also given us an opportunity to focus on online marketing, specifically on social media. There is no new partnership program, which includes no new partnership funds until spring of twenty twenty-one. We were able to seek some grants because we were not eligible for PPP. Some of the grants that we did receive were from the CARES Act and from EMT. We were also able to have our Google DMO project, which helped claim, verify, update profiles, and photos for over two hundred businesses. There are several grants that I did not mention, but again, those are in the report as well as a further summarization of what the year looked like. Taking a look into twenty twenty-one, I do want to say that we are extremely grateful for our reserves funds and that the conservative spending that we have done and will continue to do, that is something that has put us into a strong position for when travel returns. When you take a look at the budget, you will see that we have budgeted for forty percent of lodging receipts from twenty nineteen. We're taking a look at that and continuing to monitor that as the year progresses, and as we monitor that, we'll make our spending decisions based on that information at the time. Before I take any questions, I would like to extend some thank yous on behalf of the Visit Winona and the board. First thank you goes out to the mayor, the council, and the city manager for your outstanding support and encouragement, and also for funding the carpet and tile at the Visitor Center. I do want to send a special thank you out to Mayor Peterson. As you come up to the end of your term, all of your years, you have been a great ambassador for tourism, and we thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Chad, Patrick, and Marty from the Parks, Park and Rec Maintenance for your support and your hard work. The maintenance crew does a fantastic job of keeping the Visitor Center maintained, and we appreciate you. I thank you to the Visit Winona Board of Directors for the dedication and engagement through this difficult year, and a special thank you for those retiring from the board. Eric, Diane, and Jamie, thank you for your years of commitment. I thank you to the Visit Winona staff, Pat, Kate, Cynthia, and Mary for your understanding, flexibility, and creativity this year. And a special, large thank you to Pat Mutter for her leadership, organization, and commitment. I think you goes to K. Matthew, K. Matthews, for going above and beyond, not just this year, but every year, but the extra time you spent this year. I thank you to the Visitor Center staff and all of the volunteers. I would like to thank the Visit Winona partners for not only giving our visitors a reason to come to Winona, but also creating a memorable experience. I thank you to Winona County Historical Society, Winona Chamber of Commerce, and Winona County. And at this time, I'll open it up for any questions for me.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there questions for Speaker?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I agree, Nicole, with all of the recognition given out to all the partners of the operations, and I know, I believe they do it, but I hope, hopefully, that there is a big thank you sent out to the Winona Hotel owners and managers because they do generate a very, very large portion of your budget with the hotel and, with the motel and lodging tax. And like I say, it appears that you already are preparing for probably less of that coming in, so good foresight on that, but just make sure that we thank these hotel operators and owners. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Nicole, I would, this won't come as any surprise to Pat, I know, but a suggestion, when you submit your budget, it would also be of interest, I think, to have a balance sheet along with this so that we could see what you have for reserves, et cetera. So, maybe in the future. Other questions?
Councilman Thirley with a.
Oh, I'll go ahead.
Well, thank you, as a past, actually, Pat's predecessor as a CVB director. I want to congratulate her on the award she received, and it's really a great award. I knew Roger Toussaint over the years. He, a great ambassador for tourism in Minnesota, and on these, during these trying times, I appreciate reading about the steps that the Visit Winona folks have taken to recognize these times that we're in, and we'll hope that twenty twenty-one and beyond will be a much more robust time for tourism. We're going to be taking some action later on in the agenda tonight for additional tourism opportunities for Winona via the boats that may or may not hopefully stop in our community over the next two or three or four more years. So, congratulations, and I certainly support any action we take to approve your budget and continue the relationship the city has had with Visit Winona going forward. Thank you.
I would echo that as well, I think that, well, I've had an opportunity to work very closely with the visitor Visit Winona staff, and they do an outstanding job. Anybody else wish to speak?
It's Pat, Mayor.
Okay, Pat, go ahead.
Thank you for, um, thank you, Mayor and Council. I do want to extend Nicole's wishes to you for all your work in all these years and your amazing support for Visit Winona and tourism. You've been a wonderful ambassador for us, and we will miss you. And I look forward to, and we look forward to, working with the new mayor and city council members. I do want to extend a big thank you to Elderly for your greetings, but also just all your work for all these years, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you and having you volunteer when we have the boats come to town. I also want to make greetings to Paul Scholmeyer, who's leaving the council, and for all his work on behalf of bicycling and sustainability, and we also hope to see you as a volunteer and that you are staying in touch with the second train issues. As I was on the phone today with someone from All Aboard Minnesota, and they are looking forward to featuring Winona on a video that they will be putting out, hopefully, working on in the new year. But thank you, everyone, for your support, and I do want to extend a big thank you to Patrick and Chad and Marty too, for all the work and help. They make our Visitor Center look so good and so clean and nice, and we get so many comments from visitors who stop in there. So, thank you all for your support, and we look forward to a great year. And Mayor, I did note your request for a balance sheet, and we will make sure that happens next year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this topic? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to accept the proposed budget.
I'm Michelle Alexander, move to approve the budget.
I lean seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle and a second by Lean. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thirley.
Hi.
Holder.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item two point three, the municipal consent for Trunk Highway forty-three, Mankato Avenue.
Okay, it's another public hearing, so I'll just start the public hearing open and ask if anybody wishes to speak, but we'll start with Brian, our Public Works Director.
MinDOT's here, seeking municipal consent for the TH forty-three, Mankato Avenue project. Chad Hansen from MinDOT's going to give a presentation, pre-presentation. Most council members are already familiar with the project, so this will be a lot of overview and explanation of the municipal consent process. Can you hand it over to Chad?
All right, thanks, Brian. Yeah, this is Chad Hansen here. Speaking to you about the Highway forty-three project, I don't know if I was given, if I'm able to share my screen now here?
This is Brad, IT coordinator, go ahead, Chad.
All right. See if that works. All right, you seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. All right, well, yeah, thank you, Council, for having me on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to, you know, I've submitted several of the materials to you guys already, and I think that majority of that is already in your city council packet that you have on hand. I guess the main thing is that we want to go over tonight, just kind of a real quick project status update, kind of how we got to this point. The purpose of the hearing, and then I'll touch on the layout, the estimate, and then the schedule of the project and where we're at with that. So, this is really a snapshot of what the work that we've done over the last, you know, two to three years on this project. It's been a significant effort to get to this point, and, you know, we've really, we've, the public engagement started back in twenty eighteen, and we've really tried to focus this, really get out there, gather the information from the residents, from the stakeholders, some of the businesses along the corridor. We've met, you know, personally with some of the new ones that are developing with the Burger King, the Quick Trip that's going to be redeveloped south of Highway sixty-one. We met with, you know, with Winona Health. We have a, the Public Engagement Committee, they've been great to work with as well, that's some of the, some of the local residents, stakeholders, and those people representing the businesses along the corridor as well, as long as a few elected officials and city representatives. You know, we've done a detailed alternatives analysis process, looking at basically two primary options that you're well aware of, between the signalized corridor and roundabout corridor. We've looked at existing operations and safety, some of the issues with that, and then we've projected that out ten, twenty years and beyond with our traffic levels and what we'd anticipate with that. We've had multiple city council workshops, and I, I think, out of that last one that we had a while back, kind of what came out of that, we went out and we did have another public engagement meeting. So, that was just held a little over a month ago. So, that's kind of the culmination of all the work that's gone into this project over the last two to three years. So, what has come out of that is now we have our Highway forty-three corridor layout, which was submitted to you, and that has been completed. Which brings us to the night. So, the municipal consent process is something required in statute, and really what is triggering, triggering it on this project is that we are changing access. There's a handful of accesses along the corridor that are changing, primarily private accesses. The roundabouts themselves do not trigger municipal consent, because they're a, in statutes, it states that roundabout, roundabouts are anything that are used to regulate traffic or are a safety device, safety measure, are, do not require municipal consent. But nonetheless, we are here for the municipal consent due to the access issue. So, the primary things I want to focus on tonight are really that layout, I'll give a real quick overview of that again. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed since the last meeting on that. I'll go over the cost estimate. And then again, the project schedule. So here's the layout at a very high level. I'm gonna pull up another version of that just so we can zoom in a little bit more. So starting on the north end of the project at Sarnia. With the alternative this that we have, it is a basically a single lane roundabout except for the northbound approach. And the intent of that is so that right lane would be kind of would continue on through. So when the train blocks the Mankato Avenue north of the project limits, that lane, the traffic can queue up in that right lane and it does not shut down the roundabout. So the roundabout would continue to function even with train blockage. Another thing that this really helps out with that I want to point out is a lot of the things that we heard from people was the, kind of the weaving from people coming off of Sarnia, taking a right to go south on Mankato, having to shift over two lanes to take immediate left onto Front Neck. This simplifies that for traffic by bringing everybody into a single lane and then only widening out once they get right to the intersection. And again, then that left, that left lane southbound would go to Front Neck and then either lane could continue on through. So I'm down to at Front Neck again, really not a lot's changed here. You know, the access to Winona Health will remain as it is today. And then to the businesses as well. There is a multi-use trail continuous for the, the length of the project and on the the west side, that'll be a ten-foot trail for bicyclists and pedestrians. On the east side, that would, that will be a six-foot sidewalk. And the intent is really to try to separate those out so we can keep the bikers on the one side and then the other side would be a, you know, a safer environment just for pedestrians. As it is today. Moving on down to Riverbend. You know, again, we have met with the Burger King, which will be sitting here right in the southwest quadrant of that or southeast quadrant, I'm sorry. And this has been designed to accommodate that development. You know, the, the access into Winona Health, we've, we've met with them and, you know, they really stress the importance of making, keeping that access open throughout construction. So they definitely have a way to get in there for, you know, both staff, patients and then emergency response as well. So we will continue to work with them on that, but this does, this does accommodate that too. Moving on down, this is at Parks and Brewski. And as you're aware, this was originally was going to be a median all the way through this intersection. You know, we were, we did hear concerns from some of these businesses in the area. And the biggest concern from them was still being able to take a left turn into the, into their, their property, especially southbound. And then going to the new Y M C A northbound being allowed so they can make that northbound left onto Parks. So we have modified the design to allow that. This does accommodate left and right off of forty three, but coming off of Parks and Brewski would only be able to take a right. Which would prevent the, that, that most dangerous left turn movement. Which was brought up repeatedly from a meeting with the locals and in the public meetings. And then bringing on down to Mankato and highway sixty one. You've seen this before, but it is a, it will be a two-lane approach from all directions. The, the southbound exit and the northbound exit will only be a single lane. And the reason for that is because we really want to do as much as we can to reduce the number of lanes here to only provide enough capacity for what is needed today. And not have to add additional conflict points for traffic when it's not needed. This has been designed so it does meet today's traffic levels and the projected levels. But if, you know, if there does get to be operational issues in the future, traffic grows faster than anticipated. We have designed it to allow this design to be widened out to add another exit lane from both northbound and southbound sixty one. So going on to Mankato, basically you'd have two lanes exiting. And again, that's to accommodate future capacity. On a, moving on down to the Quick Trip. We have been working again closely with them, this access, the shared access at East Lake Boulevard, which goes into the McDonald's and or across from there goes into that shared easement with McDonald's and Quick Trip. There will be a northbound right turn lane into that. And then again, just to point out that the, the bike trail will continue on the east side on the south. Once you get south of highway forty three, the, the bike trail will connect over to East Lake Boulevard. So bikes, that was a a thing that we had heard multiple times. People wanted to be able to bike to get to easier access to East Lake Boulevard. We've accommodated that as well as making this bicycle trail going south from our limits. And really that is part of the Mississippi River Trail, the M R T. So that, that'll follow that blue road and then cross the south leg of the roundabout. So that's just a, a very high-level look at, at the project. You know, the other thing I want to point out, this does function significantly better as a corridor of roundabouts. As opposed to looking singularly at them, which our traffic model has shown. And the biggest reason for that is just because of the platooning. You can imagine the traffic signal in the middle of any one of these roundabouts within the corridor. You hit a red, you hit a green light, that whole platoon of vehicles releases, gets to the roundabout all at the same time, which, you know, does not, does not work as well as kind of the roundabouts, they regulate traffic, maintain a consistent speed through the corridor. And then uh makes it much safer as well. I will flip back here. And again, this is just a summary of what, what we went over the last meeting. There are just a couple of slides here I'll touch on. You know, the project originally started at highway sixty one and went to Sarnia. This is, this is some of the main reasons that we had looked at that intersection as well. It's, you know, over the last ten years, we've had a hundred and twenty total crashes. It's our second highest crash cost intersection in the district. The signal length is over three minutes during the AM and PM peak hours, which obviously leads to long delays and significant backups during those peak periods, which again was noted frequent, or quite frequently from the public during our meetings. This is just a summary of the two alternatives that we had looked at. The signal needing two additional left or two left turn lanes on each approach. You'd have five approach lanes at the signal as opposed to only two for the roundabout at the most, which leads to a lower crash risk. The crossing distance for pedestrians is about five times as long at a signal, at the signalized intersection, just because of the need for all those additional lanes to accommodate the, the traffic levels. Their significant, roundabouts are significantly safer for pets and bikes. I think there's, the studies have shown up to eighty-eight percent fewer crashes for fatal and injury crashes at, at roundabouts for pets and bikes. Uh, lower delay, shorter queues. And then again, you know, the tangent speeds really encourage that speeding, which has kind of been a common theme through this corridor that we've heard, especially at the sixty one intersection. Some of the, the high rates of speed that go through there, which increase the safety risk. The roundabouts naturally force people to slow down. So they really help to regulate those traffic speeds. So at the culmination of all of that, the roundabout was selected for the safety benefits, the mobility benefits, and then the reduced delay. And then we did receive three and a half million dollars in safety funding, which allowed us to extend the project and improve the highway sixty one intersection as well. Uh, just some of the things since our, our last meeting to just we've really, you know, focused on some of the pedestrian safety measures that we can do to do, do everything we can to make the environment safer for pets and bikes. We've looked close at some of the large vehicles to make sure we can accommodate the largest loads that would go through this area, including the oversized and permitted loads. Just last week, actually, we met with the state signing office. You know, the most important thing with roundabouts is really just to make it very clear to traffic far enough in advance what lane they need to be in. So there's no confusion when they get to the roundabout. So we're, we'll be installing numerous overhead signs to really delineate to traffic where they need to be at far enough in advance so they're not making decisions right at the roundabout. We've been working with our engagement committee on some of the aesthetics and landscaping. And then again, that, that really can help out with speed control as well, just by some of the aesthetics and landscaping that you can do to really make it feel more like a urban environment. So it's just one example. Again, I've showed this before, but this is what we'll be doing at all the multi-lane crossings with the, the installation of R R F Bs, the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons. We'll have the enhanced cross pavement markings. The R R F B will, will have one on each side of all the multi-lane approaches. So just to point that out as well. So that's kind of a high-level overview of the layout. Much of that you've seen already. So I won't focus on it anymore here. As far as the estimate, the current cost estimate, the total construction estimate is twelve point one million dollars. That includes ten point three million dollar in Min Dot cost, which is broken down further into federal and state funding. That includes three and a half million dollars in federal safety money just because we, because of the roundabout being considered a safety measure. Is why that was selected. There's one point eight, one point eight million in, in city costs. Which includes, if you see at the bottom, we've got a little under four hundred and fifty thousand estimated right now at city utility replacements. And that's still a, you know, that's being, that number is being refined by our consultant, but that's for replacement of all the, all the city water main and sanitary sewer along the corridor. It includes a hundred and sixty-six thousand in aesthetics. One thing I want to point out too is Min Dot can pay up to two percent of our base cost in aesthetics. So, you know, based on roughly ten million dollar project, that would be about two hundred thousand dollars that we could credit the city for this project to, to enhance the project and that can go towards this hundred and sixty-six in aesthetics. You know, there could be enhanced lighting and that's really up to the, that's up to the city. You guys have that decision on, you know, what, how, how you want to spend that money and if you want to add additional dollars into that to further enhance the corridor. Just some other costs too that aren't in that, the, the construction engineering. Min Dot will, do all the construction admin, do all the construction inspection. We'll do all the right-of-way acquisition. City cost, like I mentioned, is the aesthetics. That's really up to the city to make a decision on how much they want to spend there. And then there is a, a small percentage. There's a four percent cost of whatever the total, the total cost is for the city utility replacements. There's a four percent additional cost on that for all the construction engineering and admin that's related to that. That it does get added on to that. And then any contamination, the majority of this will be Min Dot costs if there's any cleanup costs. You know, if there's any contamination that is driven solely by replacement of sanitary sewer or the water main, you know, that would, that would be a city cost. But at this time, it doesn't look like there'll be a lot of that based on our initial drilling. Kind of our schedule right now where we're sitting, you know, ideally we would have been at this point a few months ago. But, you know, we really want to take, do everything we can. We had that additional public meeting here a while back, so that, that pushed us municipal consent back a little bit further. Now we're at December of twenty twenty, which is really, uh, the right-of-way process should be kicking off. It's typically the right-of-way process that we have to go through is about a two-year process. That's everything from, you know, getting the titles, looking up the legal descriptions, all that. Discussions with the property owners, making offers and then, you know, getting them to sign. That's usually a two-year process. We're going to have to try to condense that some. But really the municipal consent is needed before we can get that kicked off and go any further with that. So we are tight on that. Uh, the final design too, we're going to be, we're going to be pushing on that hard here. We started a little bit early in fall of this, this year. That'll extend all the way through October of twenty one. And that's when we will have to turn all of our plans into central office for advertisement. Uh, the bid letting for this will be January of twenty twenty two with construction plan to start in spring of twenty twenty two. So next steps, you know, again, like I mentioned, the right-of-way is uh, waiting to get kicked off here, get that moving ahead further. Design plans are under development. Uh, the, the corridor aesthetics and landscaping. That is a, a work in progress. We'll be working with the engagement committee on that. Uh, more to come, but there'll be additional public engagement on, opportunities on that as well. So and then staging plans and construction details, I put that in here. We'll be meeting with, you know, continued meeting with Winona Health especially, but just trying to make sure it's uh, we're doing everything we can to provide access to all the businesses and properties along this corridor throughout construction. So even though it'll be under construction, we'll be doing half at a time. The one side will be done first. We'll get that done with, flip over and we'll do the other side of Mankato Avenue. Um, that's just kind of the, the rough staging. But again, we will be providing access at all times to all the people along the corridor. There'll be at least one additional public engagement meeting on this um, in addition to some of them stakeholder meetings. So Um, in addition to some of them stakeholder meetings, so. I guess with that, I will open it up if there's any questions for me. One other thing I wanted to note here is we did have a noise wall vote just recently, um. You know, as a part of the environmental process on this one. We were required to do a noise study to evaluate. The effect on the project on the noise along this corridor. There were two locations that were, uh, called out where the noise walls were determined to be cost-effective. One was on the east side between Riverbend Avenue, or Riverbend Road and Front Neck. The other was along highway sixty-one on the south side. I guess southwest quadrant of the sixty-one and Mankato intersection. Um, that did go to, the way, the way that works is it goes to the property owners that are affected. By the noise walls, it goes to a vote. And they elected to, to vote those down, so the project will not include any noise walls. Um. For, uh, going forward at all, so that was just, and again, that's a result, direct result of that vote. So. With that, I don't know if there's anything else for me.
We'll, we'll open it up for questions and comments then. Are there any?
Uh, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, how, what's the timeframe on, uh, the completion of the projects, uh, Chad?
Um, the project will start, like I said, spring of twenty twenty-two. The, the plan is to do the majority of all the construction in twenty twenty-two. There likely be some cleanup work the following year, you know, maybe the landscaping. Um, there's always construction items that would extend in that next year, but it would be anticipated that all. Things that would affect access to anyone along the corridor, anyone driving through the corridor or for pedestrians. Would get done in that first year.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, this is Pam speaking.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, uh, I, when this project was first being designed, I was very concerned about pedestrians. About pedestrians being able to cross, uh, Mankato and also. Uh, and also, of course, crossing highway sixty-one. The way things have been divi- is, uh, designed since that point, I really feel much reassured. That, uh, it'll be much easier to cross, uh, now than it has been before. Okay, so it's going to be, I understand about the, the blinking lights and the pedestrian controlled lights will help people move. Across the intersections to the, to the, uh, medians and so forth. But, um, there's one concern I have, and that's that we are depending on those blinking lights to stop traffic. Uh, what happens when the blinking lights just suddenly don't work? Uh, there are quite a few MINDOT-controlled pedestrian lights in, in town that don't work and don't work for a good long time, I think. So what's our assurance that we're going to have prompt service to those pedestrian lights? And what can people do if, if they notice that a light is out? That's probably too, too much of a detail for you, but that's really the only concern I have about the pedestrian crossing. Thank you.
Yep, and I, and I just would like to point out too, thanks for those comments. Um, that's another reason too why we, we, we wanted to make sure that it, there's kind of re- those redundant flashers. So by having them not only on the right side, but also on the left side of each approach. So if one does get, you know, knocked down for some reason. And before someone can get out there to maintain that, there, we will have redundancy in those. Um, so there is that, you know, we'll be working closely with. Uh, the city maintenance to make it clear who maintains what piece of those things. Um, so, you know, we can get out there as, as fast as we can.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Al here with a question. I have a procedural question. Uh, this is a public hearing, um. Is this the time for his council people to ask questions, or are we going to open it up for the? Uh, public who might be, uh, viewing this to make their comments?
You know, Al, I think you're right. I think we should, uh, let members of the public, uh, speak up if they wish and then, uh. After the public hearings closed, we'll have the council, uh, discuss it, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll ask if there's any members of the public at this time that wish to speak. Anybody out there wish to speak to this topic? Municipal consent for the trunk highway forty-three, Mankato Avenue, roundabouts.
Yeah, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Ted Hazelton, ten seventy-three West Fifth Street in Winona. And I'm hoping everybody got the email I sent out about this topic and, and. Um, you, you've seen my concerns and I've. I've driven big rigs through many of these that I pointed out in that letter. And one, one, one issue that I see that I wasn't able to include. Is if you're southbound on forty-three. And you wanna go to QuickTrip, you can't do that with, until you go to the next light, make a U-turn and then come back. Can they, the look, I think MINDOT should seriously consider eliminating that. Media and, and put in a left turn lane there to access QuickTrip and McDonald's and that. So you don't have to travel further and then encourage people to do U-turns and come back again. And then the, one other thing is after a train goes through. What about the southbound traffic that will bottle up at this roundabout? When you, with, where the, where it's two lanes going into a roundabout. The northbound seems to have been taken care of and I was, I got a phone call from. Chris at, uh, Winona Post telling me about that they changed that or amended that or changed around. So it sounds like if you're going north and you wanna go. Continue and make that left and go down Sarnia, then it shouldn't be an issue. With that second lane, originally it was one, but my question is, or my concern is that. If you're going south after the train leaves and then all the traffic. Winds up there at once, plus can, plus the cross traffic people going through the roundabout. I'm not a fan of the, I'm not a fan of the, of roundabouts and, and I. Would encourage people if they wanna see mo- or streets with multiple roundabouts. Take a ride up to Jamaica Avenue or Louisiana, Louisiana's. Louisiana Avenue up in Saint, in Saint Louis Park. Car parts and glass all over and multiple accidents there weekly.
Okay, well, thank you. And you raised a couple of points, maybe, uh, Mr. Hanson can, uh, address those.
Yeah, I can, uh, maybe, uh, I don't know if I, you want me to share a screen, but I, I, uh. As far as the QuickTrip access, um, that will. There'll be no U-turns necessary on that, um, and I can, uh. If you're southbound, if you're southbound on, um. I guess, I'm hoping you're seeing my screen here, but if you're southbound on Mankato Avenue.
No, I can't see a screen, I'm on a phone.
Okay, yeah, well, if you're. If you're southbound on, on Mankato, there is a left turn lane that goes right to, um. The, uh, the driveway at Sugarloaf, so, yeah, we've worked with QuickTrip to make sure they're all right with that. But that will allow the left turn lane right, that, that left turn into there. We've also ran truck turning movements and QuickTrip has done the same. And we've reached the same conclusion that that will work for trucks and for all vehicles to make the left in there, so.
Now, does that include WB fifty-seven trucks and then when they haul the. The hundred and ninety-five foot windmill blades through there?
Well, I'm not aware, I guess, that, the, the windmill necessarily be stopping at QuickTrip, but it is, it is designed.
No, I mean.
The largest.
No, I mean the na- I mean to navigate this thing to go up forty-three to I ninety.
Yep, yep, we have, we have ran those through there as well, so this, this is able to accommodate that. The biggest thing with the oversized loads is, um, to try to get these through, we. We locate the signings so that in the locations where those large trucks. Would go over, they can track over the curb much like they would, um, at a lot of the other. Uh, urban intersections or signalized intersections, we make them so the signs can be easily removed and just pulled up. Um, and then the good thing with those, a lot of times they have the steerable rear axles. So that's also, does make that somewhat easier for them.
All right, well, let's, uh, open it up to other questions from the public. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to, uh, speak? One more chance here. Anybody else wish to speak to this topic? Very none, I'm gonna. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, this is Mike Kennedy, three sixteen West Seventh Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Could I talk about Broadway?
Uh, no, the topic here tonight, uh, uh, this public hearing is for Mankato Avenue and the roundabouts.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hey, Mayor George here.
Uh, George?
Uh, I don't think Chad addressed the question that Ted brought up about, uh, the train traffic backing up. Into, uh, on the south side there, or if you're traveling north, I don't think Chad explained that there was another lane there for that.
Okay, Chad, you wanna elaborate on that?
So, yeah, like, uh, like he said, the, the northbound, we have added a. Uh, an additional lane so, coming southbound. So the, the traffic will queue up in that northbound lane. Coming southbound, you know, really, it's, it will be that northbound left turn. Those people will basically, they'll, they'll have the right of a way within the roundabout. Um. Over those people coming southbound, so those, the, the roundabout will naturally meter those drivers as they're. They're coming out at, in the southbound direction. So, I mean, it's, it's much like it is today, right now, it, it really, you know, all that traffic gets released at once when the train clears. And it, you know, it gets to be an issue right at Front Neck and it just slowly dissipates as it goes through the corridor. Roundabouts will function much the same way that they'll naturally meter the traffic. And, you know, it'll start to spread out throughout the corridor. Um, but that, those delays and those, that, that platoon will spread out over the corridor, um, rel- relatively quickly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. And, uh, open it up for discussion with the council.
Mark, I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution, Michelle.
Mark, I, Pam, second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Michelle and a second from Pam, further discussion.
Also member Shoemire.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, this, uh, question I think would be for Chad, um, Mr. Hanson. So I'm curious what happens to the, the proposed project if, if municipal consent is not granted.
Um, you know, I guess, I would say the project is. Would be in jeopardy of moving forward at all, um. You know. We have the funding identified in twenty twenty-two. Um, the funding cuts, you know, with the revenue dip because of COVID, our, our revenues have been cut for future years. Um, this likely the, the money would go to another project for twenty twenty-two, we'd have to find a way to, to spend that. Um, you know, if we, we've already moved, had to, had to move ahead with the, the design of this as is. Um, so I don't think we'd have the time to change course right now, based on all the work that's been done up to this point. Um, so I guess we would just have to try to look in future years if we could try to, try to find the funding for this, um. You know, it, it would be a, it would be a big challenge to, to try to do something like that, just. It's a big project, it's a high dollar amount for our district. Um, so, I guess I don't have a definitive answer which way this would go, but we would just have to look at our funding situation for. Future years and, you know, we would try to, have to try to work something out in the future, but. Um, it'd be, it'd be very difficult, especially with some of the funding cuts we've had recently.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Chad. I guess I'm wondering, uh, why this is on the agenda tonight when we have several council members that are. This is their last council meeting and new council members coming on in two weeks and. Um, they're gonna be the ones working through this project, I guess, over the next couple of years and. Just wondering if there's a reason why it had to be on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I, like I mentioned, uh, you know, we had wanted to have this. The goal was to have this at least a couple of months ago. We wanted to have that, that last council workshop. Um, the last one that we had with you, uh, at least a couple of months ago. And, you know, all the, all the information and all the discussions that we ha- have had thus far have been with. You know, with you, with this council and we wanted to have it after that last meeting, but then, you know, we really felt the need and I. Think you agreed that it'd be better if we had another public engagement meeting before we had the municipal consent hearing. So it just kinda, you know, the tales of that are, this is where we're at right now. Um, and we are, you know, it's. It is, you know, it definitely wasn't the preference to have it at this, the last meeting here with the EU, but it's just. This is where we're, this is where we're at, based on everything that's happened up to this point and. We were, we would ask that for approval simply because, you know, we have. We've, we've really been working with you up to this point. We've had all the workshops and all the information presented is, has been, uh. With this council, so I guess that's kind of why, why we're at where we are.
Council member Shoemire.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, Mr. Hanson, um, so I've, uh, there's no, um. Uh, doubt that, you know, my concerns throughout the discussion of this project have. Have been about pedestrians and pedestrians being able to safely move, move, uh, through the intersection. And I've asked before, and I've had this concern on other streets, uh, in town, and that has to do with speed limits. And, um, I don't believe that, um. I just don't trust auto- automobile drivers and, and my experience, uh, is, is dictates. That lack of trust. And I know that the design and what you guys have said, and, and I know you've done a good job and I commend you on that. In coming up with this design. But I don't believe that, uh, those vehicles that are going fifty-five, sixty-five miles an hour in a fifty-five mile an hour zone. Are going to be willing to slow for pedestrians to cross. And so, um. Uh, and I've never gotten a clear answer other than, well, the design will handle it. Why we can't slow the automobile traffic on highway sixty-one, northbound and southbound. For the half mile before the intersection to forty-five. To get the traffic slowed down more prior to entering the intersection. There's never been an answer to that. It's just been the highways built to handle it and the roundabout can handle it, so that's my concern. Do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, you, you know, the, the thing with this, with speed limits is we can, I guess. Yeah, you know, the, the thing with this, with speed limits is we can, I guess, the, the biggest thing with, you know, the intersection as it functions today is there is that speeding out there. And I, I don't, I, I believe I've said it, but um, you know, we could, we can post the signs out there to put a lower speed limit through this area, I think the the, the fact is that places where that's done, some of the drivers definitely obey that, they follow that speed limit. But not everyone does, and just by posting a sign out there, isn't gonna slow traffic down and necessarily, you're, you're not gonna get a hundred percent compliant, compliance on those signs, or probably even a ninety percent or eighty percent. Um, the way the roundabouts are designed are, so it will force drivers to slow down, so we naturally, we introduce the curves, so far enough out in, in advance of the intersection, this, this, the curve starts to tighten up, the, the roadway alignment changes so that drivers will only be able to take Highway sixty-one at fifty miles an hour. That, as you approach closer to the roundabout, that those curves tighten up, so drivers will be down to thirty-five miles an hour, and then by the time you, traffic gets to the roundabout, they will be down to twenty miles an hour and it's, it's not just the design, but it's, that's the physically the fastest drivers will be able to drive through there because of the curvature of the road. And we do that very gradually to make that safer for drivers, but it also, um, you know, it makes it safer for pedestrians at the, at the crossings. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about people speeding through the area because the road is designed that way. The, the drivers won't be able to go faster than that, so rather than to, you know, just put a sign out there and hope that drivers can, are, are gonna follow that, you know, without enforcement out there, twenty-four hours a day, the drivers just unfortunately don't obey the signs and get a hundred percent compliance out of that, so in order to make it a hundred percent sa- safer and to be a hundred percent confident that everybody is driving slower. That's why we have designed it like this, so. And that's really the same for all the approaches throughout the whole corridor. We introduce those curves on the approach, and then by the time they're to the roundabout, they're down to that twenty mile an hour.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, thanks for that response, so then, Mr. Hanson, would you say that, that the, the, that the design combined with the narrowing uh forces the traffic to slow?
Correct.
Thank you for that answer.
Councilmember Thurlie with a few questions, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Al.
Uh, thank you, um, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm reacting to what people have said to me uh during this particular part of our council agenda tonight and um, I haven't really had any response that has uh allowed for an enthusiastic um endorsement of, of this particular plan. What I'm hearing from people is that they would prefer, at least at Highway fourteen sixty-one and forty-three, a traditional intersection. I think in some of our earlier discussions, uh, Mindot has proposed uh additional left turn lanes and all of that in the traditional signalized intersections. But also what I'm hearing is the revival of an earlier plan to address pedestrian and bicycle safety, which is to construct uh an overpass um in the area uh just uh west of that intersection, west or uh, you know, uh, north of the intersection uh which had been proposed many years ago, which would have taken bicycle and pedestrian traffic over Highway sixty-one to uh Lake Boulevard, and now with the new YMCA getting underway, uh, that might be something that uh Mindot may wish to consider, and, and, you know, don't, don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm trying to uh work with uh um, uh, the good folks at Mindot who have been wonderful partners, you know, in our, in our infrastructure throughout the city of Winona. But we're just trying to do what is best for our community going, going forward, so I'd appreciate your reaction to that, if you would, Chad.
Chad?
You did. Chad, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry about that. Um, so yeah, I guess in regards to the overpass, um, you know, that I am aware that's come up previously. Um, maybe Brian, I don't know if Brian DeFrang wants to speak to that at all, but um, you know, that would have to be something looked at separately than this project. Um, I, I think it would be, it would be challenging and um, just because of the topography through there and some of the tight space constraints. The other thing that, you know, a lot of times those things get, they do get put in, but yet pedestrians still wanna resort to the, the shortest path, what's the fastest for me? Do I wanna go up and over the, the overpass and go down? Um, you know, up and over and then back down the other side to get across the road, am I gonna shoot over on my own anyways? So sometimes the effectiveness isn't quite as great, but I don't know, Brian, do you wanna say anything else in regard to that?
I, I would agree with that, Chad, if pedestrians given an at-grade option and an overpass option, which with the ADA requirements and the five percent slope, that, that traffic or that track going up to the overpass is usually quite long. They generally take the at-grade option. Um, not saying it's not an option to do that, but I, I would say it's probably a standalone project, maybe not with this project.
Um, uh, thank you for that answer, I guess, um, you really haven't spoken to the idea of um uh presenting a traditional intersection, especially at Highway fourteen uh sixty-one and forty-three with the additional left turn lanes. Um, uh, I guess your comments about pedestrian access across that intersection are interesting because you talk about the individual uh crossing on certain elements or legs of a roundabout. But what does that total compared to, say, a traditional uh intersection, the individual legs of getting across from uh one side of uh sixty-one fourteen to uh the other side as far as timing goes or uh as far as the actual length goes?
Yeah, um, maybe I'll share my screen, but I guess, I guess the, the biggest thing with um, with the roundabout that is a little bit different is the fact that they only have a single lane um to cross at a time with the roundabout. Or, I'm sorry, one direction of traffic to cross um at a time, so, you know, the traditional intersection, traffic has to kinda look both ways, they have, they got the, the traditional intersection that you mentioned. You'd have five approach lanes here, and you have to, you have to look, traffic coming, turning left from, from the opposing direction, you, you might have traffic coming through at you. You have, you know, traffic coming both approaching and exiting. So you're looking in all directions, whereas if you cross at a roundabout, it's much simpler. You come to the, the roundabout crossing, all the traffic is coming from one direction, you look to your left. If there's no one there, or once they have stopped, you proceed across the intersection. You, you come to the next crossing, you look to your right, and there's only traffic coming from your right in a single lane, for example, at how, at the southbound exit. Um, so it's, it's not only that distance, but it's also the fact that you only have to look one direction. You have a single lane or two lanes at, at most, whereas, you know, a signal, you might have traffic coming from two or three different directions that you, that you have to be paid attention to all at once. So, you know, even though there's a red from one direction, there's likely somebody that is good, could potentially be crossing your path. Um, in regards to, you know, just having a signal at this one intersection and then having him, the roundabouts at the other ones. The, the, I guess the biggest thing that I mentioned, I, I, I think I mentioned it before, but this corridor will function significantly better with the roundabout at all four of them. Um, just because of that platooning and the arrival, and if you get, you have all the people stopped at this one, are all released at once. It significantly cuts down on the, the effectiveness of the, the, the rest of them, just because of that constraining, constant metering of traffic. Um, consistent traffic throws, flow through the corridor. Um, the other thing I, I think I, I wanna mention is, you know, we did have three and a half million dollars in safety funding for this because of this, and I think that really is really shows how not only, you know, Mindot, the project team that we've been working together. Um, you know, the federal, the, the federal funding was granted simply because this is a roundabout. So I think this one intersection by far will benefit the most from the roundabout as opposed to any of the other three together, so I think this is where we're gonna get the biggest bang for the buck and you know, just 'cause of all those safety issues that we have out there today, we have queuing, sometimes back, you know, well beyond Sugarloaf, well beyond Parks and Brewski going southbound. Um, so this, yeah, I think the biggest benefit is at this intersection.
Well, I appreciate your explanation, I may not agree of my own experience in some other parts of the state with a mixed of uh roundabouts and signalized intersections, uh, I don't particularly agree with, then again, you're the engineer and I'm not, but I'm responding to uh what people are, are contacting me about, so I, but I appreciate your explanation, so I thank you for that.
Any other questions for Chad?
Uh, Mayor George here.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Yeah, just to touch base a little bit on this, as uh, now we've been on this project now for three years. This council that's seated right now, we have been on this with Mindot from the start. Uh, the intersection out there for pedestrian safety, for those of us that go through it every day, I know, Paul, you traveled out that way for, for many years. That intersection right now, as it sits, walking through that little cow trail, and then you're sitting in between the median, and a lot of times people may start to walk on a red light, and then they're in the middle of the median with their child, waiting to get clearance to go ahead and continue it. And that's about, and as far as the east side of that intersection goes, that is about the only side that you can cross if you wanna use the word safely. Now, the roundabouts, the speed of roundabouts, the one out on County Road seventeen, and I've been through the ones down by Prairie de Sheen, roundabouts are popping up all over our country. Now, as far as that one out on seventeen, I automatically know I have to slow down. I can't go through that roundabout forty, forty-five or fifty, I go down to Prairie de Sheen in those areas, I can't go sailing through their sixty miles an hour. I know that, and we all should know that as drivers, and it was mentioned where uh, in driver's training, they should maybe talk more about roundabouts that are out there. Now, like I said, we've been with, with Chad and Dale Grove and Brian here now over the last three years. It seems like everything that we asked them to do, increase it for bicyclists, increase it for pedestrians, uh leaving lanes open, Mindot has done that. So that's, that's all I have to say in it now, but yes, it's something new, but like I say, we know you need to slow down to go through it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Any other comments or questions? I think we might be ready to vote then, by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurlie.
No.
Councilman or woman, Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer. You're muted, Paul.
Nay.
Motion passes, five to.
Onto the petitions, requests and communications, item three point one, appointments to the Human Rights Commission of Marsha Hitz and Hannah Foss.
I'm Michelle Alexander, move approval of those appointments.
I Pam, please second down.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurlie.
Aye.
Puller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point two is the extension of the Wesley United Methodist Church parking lots lease.
I'm Michelle Alexander, move approval of that attached resolution.
Al Thurlie, I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al, any discussion?
I just have a quick question, Mark, Michelle.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Who's primarily using this parking lot at this time, because we rented it um for, primarily for ours, our, our Friendship Center. Are we just advocating for community members to park there, or where, where, what is the purpose of this lot as the city sees it?
Brian, Senator, Steve.
Uh, definitely it's the Friendship Center, obviously, we're hoping that the Friendship Center is open for the twenty twenty-one year. And that's the primary use in, in library overflow.
Thank you.
Uh, Al here for the comment. I, I just wanna mention too that I think uh some of the university students will use those parking lots as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurlie.
Aye.
Puller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item three point three is an application for the on sale and tax cutting liquor licenses for the Winona Bar Owners Group doing at, doing business as the Brickyard, and this is for the former Dan's Dugout location on uh five seventy-nine East Third Street, and I believe they are on the Zoom call if you have questions.
I'm Michelle, I'll make a motion to approve that liquor license.
Eileen second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurlie.
Aye.
Puller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under new business, item five point one is the twenty twenty-one final tax levy and budget.
Okay.
Is there a presentation?
Steve, do you wanna say a few words?
I could, Your Honor, um, the main issue before the council is the preliminary budget was approved in September twenty-first. That included the two social workers at the time for the alternative response team, which was an additional two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, down from three hundred thousand because the original plan as presented to council in August was to have three social workers. In the meantime, we've uh gone to work with the alternative response team subcommittee and came up with a plan that actually has a savings of forty thousand dollars from that number. So what council's being presented with is a proposed final levy that reduces that cost for the alternative response team to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that's what's uh impose, that's And that's what's, uh, impose, that's what's, uh, down below in the resolution. Um, there has been some discussion about adding some additional funding for the Emerald Dashboard. I would advise council, you can't go above that, uh, that extra two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but you could certainly restore some of that back, uh, from the one eighty-five if you so wished. Uh, Jessica's here as well with the calculator to do some quick math. If there's some changes that are, that are going to be made, but, uh, the main thing is to make sure that we don't exceed the preliminary levy, uh, which was approved back in September.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I'd like to move to, uh, approve the budget, uh, with fifteen thousand dollars added, uh, allocated for the, uh, Emerald Dashboard treatment to be used in the city parks with priority Wyndham and Sinclair Park.
I'll, I'll second that. Councilman Thurly here.
Okay, there was a motion by Paul and seconded by Al. Uh, discussion?
Mark Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So I am still opposed to any increase in our tax levy this year, especially as this will have long-term effects. Um, towards the budget moving forward. I think without us doing anything in twenty twenty-two, we'd be looking at a six percent increase. And that's without raises or any other additions made to the budget. I think it's the wrong time. I'm not opposed to any of the items in the budget. I think, given a different scenario, not being in the middle of a pandemic. They would all be brilliant things to accomplish, but we all talk about businesses that haven't been open for nine months or working at limited capacity. We talk about, um, affordable housing. We talk about all of these things. But we're going to raise taxes for things that are not necessary in the immediate and can be looked at as a budget for a future time. I mean, there are people that have been at work, hourly wage people that have been work, off work for nine months. And I just can't in good conscience raise taxes at any level, even if this four point eight looks like two point eight. It's just not in me to do that. I, I, I look at what some of these businesses would pay in an increase, which means they can't give raises, or maybe they can't hire people back. They haven't been able to produce products. They haven't worked at their capacity for almost a year. And so I know I'm probably alone on this, but no matter what alternatives we add or subtract, I'm not in favor of any increases in the budget at this time. I think it's the wrong time and, um, advocating for our community members. I'm going to say no to the budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor George here.
George, go ahead.
Uh, as I looked at the budget and things in the past, and I've said that, you know, I would not support any budget increase. I would not support any positions unless if they are police or fire related. And I, you know, served on that, uh, our team, a very, very good team. And I would support this budget at four point eight percent for the two uh, alternate response team members to join and to assist our police department. Uh, this is certainly help that, that they need. If the budget stays four point eight, uh, you have my vote, but I will not vote for anything above the four point eight.
Okay, thank you, George. Just to be clear, the four point eight, uh, if the twenty thousand dollars for the Emerald Dashboard uh, was included, is it still four point eight? What would it be?
Be closer to five, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from council members?
Mayor Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I, uh, also served on the, um, alternative response team with George and, um, I think it's very essential for our city, um, working in nonprofit. We often say that you show your organization's priorities in your budget, no matter what you say. Um, and I think that now is the time to show that, um, we value the safety and all meanings of the word safety, um, of our community members. And I think especially during a time of a pandemic where people have additional stresses in their lives. Um, when there's all sorts of tensions and hardships that having some extra resources available are going to be especially crucial. Um, uh, I, I think that they are absolutely necessary in the immediate. Um, and so I, I'm with, uh, Councilmember Borzakowski. I would, um, be in favor of keeping the alternative response in the budget, but not adding anything, um, beyond that.
Okay, thank you, Eileen.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I, I'd like, uh, perhaps a little clarification from the city manager. As I read the first paragraph in item one. Um, the entire forty thousand savings is depicted in the resolution below. This represents a four point eight percent increase. The fifteen thousand that I added to the budget uh, is part of that forty thousand, which would be within that forty-eight, four point eight percent. So I'd like clarification on that.
The, the savings of forty thousand dollars, if you added twenty thousand dollars back, the savings are now only twenty thousand from the preliminary levy. So you're adding twenty thousand dollars, you're, you're adding twenty thousand or fifteen thousand, whatever the motion was, back into the, into that lower level. So instead of being four point eight, it's going to be much closer to five. Cause that two twenty-five, I think we're at five point two percent, Jessica. Is that correct? Yep.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Yes, Mayor, this is Pam. I would like, I'd like to just comment about the, about the Emerald Ash Bore and the trees. If we did put a certain amount of money back, fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, whichever we're talking about. Um, it would be enough to save about half of the bad areas in, in several really critical parts of town. That, that is the Sinclair Park, Huff Street, the both the Huff Street on both sides and Wyndham Park. So that would reduce the impact as we go along. So we just take care of these few trees in these areas. And we're able to maybe give them a, a boost, uh, make them last a little bit longer so that the city tree crew has time to both cut down the diseased trees and replant them, both of which are need to happen, of course. Uh, it would just be less dramatic and it would certainly, uh, alleviate the, the dramatic impact of having all of these trees come down. That said, it's true that, uh, this is, doing it this year means that we need to do it next year and the year after that and another year. So the money we're putting in there to, to help these few trees along. We have to commit to that for several years in a row.
Okay, thank you.
I personally think that, that it is money well spent, but I understand your, the budget, um, the budget ideas. Thank you.
I don't often disagree with you, Pam, but I think that, uh, I'm not sure it is money well spent. I think the, the trees are going to die and I think there's, it's, it's time to, I think we've done a lot over the last number of years to uh, minimize the, the, the dead, uh, ash trees. But I think at this point going forward, I, I'm not comfortable, uh, continuing to spend money on that. And so I guess I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the result, the, 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 uh, the motion. Uh, I'm in favor of the, um, adding the social workers, but I'd like to keep it at four point eight myself.
Uh, Councilman Thurly.
Al, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Muted now.
Al, you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, I got it. Um, I appreciate Councilman Scholmeyer's, uh, uh, compromise here. And that's what I see it as, so that we can do a little bit uh, as far as preserving some of the trees, given time to, uh, you know, uh, take care of them. While at the same time not increasing our, our overall tax levy as much as, um, as we have been. And I, I think too, that, you know, you have to realize that our city has had, uh, an increase in our overall tax base. And if you look at, you know, the, 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 uh, dollar amounts that are increasing as far as, uh, the city's part of the property tax amount, uh, this is a small part of, of that overall. Granted that, uh, if funds are severely limited, uh, any increase is not, uh, uh, appreciated, but I think overall this is a, a benefit to the general city. So I again seconded it and I will support the motion.
Okay. Other comments? If not, let's put it to a vote.
Mayor Peterson.
No.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
No.
Alexander.
No.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Nay.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion defeated four three.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, pass the resolution for the four point eight percent increase for the budget for twenty twenty-one.
Eileen Muller, I will second that.
Okay, motion by Paul, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries six one.
Moving on to item five point two, it's the resolution for government accounting standards. And there are three separate resolutions.
Um, I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolutions. Do I need to do them all separately or can I do them all together?
You can do them as one motion.
Okay, I would make that so.
George will second that.
All right, a motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five point three is the Windcraft Inc. Consent to Assignments and Assumptions.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve this assignment and assumption.
Al Thurly here. I second the motion.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Discussion?
Uh, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, this is something the Port Authority last week, Thursday, uh, passed as well.
Okay, good, good to note that. Any further discussion? Now we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Puller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five point four is the American Cruise Line Agreement for Docking in Levy Park.
I am Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the docking license agreement with American Cruise Line.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Uh, just I'll note that, uh, two representatives from the American Cruise Line are on Zoom. And if we have any questions, uh, they're, they'd be happy to answer them. Both Paul and, and the owner, the owner and Frank who works for him.
Mark Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I don't actually have questions. I just want to thank all of you who work so hard on this. I'm very excited about the prospect of hosting American Cruise Lines here for the foreseeable future. Um, I think it's going to be great for them and for us. We have a great town. And, um, I know people really enjoy watching larger ships dock down at the levee and it, it kind of, uh, um, brings some excitement back to that, that whole, uh, port system.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's a game changer in many ways for downtown Winona, uh, to have the company bring uh, twenty-two ships to Winona in a season and, uh, likely increasing that, uh, over the years up to thirty-some, uh, stops. And then along with, uh, we can still accommodate the American Queen, uh, boats. And, uh, to me, that's, that adds a lot of excitement down to the levy and, uh, an awful lot of, uh, opportunities to show off our community of people. And, uh, I think the downtown, uh, businesses as well will, uh, benefit in the attractions. So I appreciate, uh, the work, uh, the staff have done, uh, was not, it wasn't as easy as I thought it was or would, should be, but, uh, uh, they got a contract and they got through all that with a lot of, a lot of give and take and a lot of work back and forth. Uh, so I, I think not only the staff, but the American Cruise Line, uh, people as well for, uh, sticking with us. And, uh, I know they're excited about coming to Winona.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, thanks. Um, uh, question for Paul or Frank. I'm just wondering if you'll be boarding any passengers uh, in Winona, uh, or, um, or will passengers be getting off at Winona? There's a follow-up, uh, comment, uh, after your answer.
I thank everyone for, uh, for considering American Cruise Lines. We're certainly looking forward to visiting Winona very much. Uh, Winona is a port of call on our Mississippi River itinerary, so the guests will spend a day sightseeing and visiting Winona. Then at the end of the day, the guests will return, return to the ship and will continue on the cruise.
So they won't be necessarily boarding, uh, at, at Winona?
When you say, do you mean starting or ending the cruise?
Yes.
No, Winona will not be a port of embarkation or disembarkation. It'll be a port of call.
Thank you.
Councilman Thurly.
Paul, did you have a follow-up?
I, I do. Uh, uh, nevertheless, uh, thank you and, and thank you for your patience, uh, Councilmember Thurly. Um, I, I just wanted to, to emphasize the importance of, um, of, of this to the community in terms of tourism and, and traveling. And how that piggybacks in my mind, uh, to having a, a, a second train stopping uh, in the community and the importance of, of the community, uh, supporting a second train. Um, where passengers, uh, uh, board and get off in Winona. And perhaps in the future, they, they may see that they have another option to extend their travels with the Cruise Line. Um, so I hope that the council continues to support those efforts to bring that second train and hence, uh, freight movement within the community and, um, make and recognize the options that they would have once they get here to board the Cruise Lines or to ride them in the future. Thanks. And thanks, Paul and Frank for being on the call.
Yeah, Al.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, and yeah, I appreciate the, uh, ability to vote on this and to vote in favor of, uh, this particular agreement. Um, I'm one who over the years has had interaction with people who uh, visit Winona, uh, over the years for, um, uh, you know, off of the, the other uh, cruise boats that have stopped here and, uh, they're always amazed at what they find here. And I appreciate the opportunity to amaze those passengers at a much broader audience and a more frequent audience. Uh, look forward to seeing them, uh, in Winona over the next few years. And I, as I say, appreciate and will approve this agreement. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Al. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, hearing none, let's vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Puller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Excuse me. Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five point five is a request for a letter of no objection for encroachment into the flood control easement.
Al Thurly here. I have motioned to approve this letter of no objection.
I'm Michelle Alexander, second.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Michelle. Comments, questions?
I have a question and a comment.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Pam.
My question is, will this set a precedent for others, other property owners? Um, I've, I've been in communities along waterfronts and what one does, the next one wants to do just another foot or a couple of inches higher, you know, so it gets to be that kind of a game. Are we paving the way for, for more requests and more development on top of that levy?
Uh, at this point, all this does is push it to the core to decide whether or not they will allow this. Um, the main thing is that there isn't actually an encroachment on the levy that would impede our flood fighting or the levee's ability to fight the flood by itself. Um, the core will make the determination in the end. This is, the core may ask Mr. Meyer for more information or something like that. But, uh, this is not you approving this actual building project.
Okay, so we're not setting a precedent. It's each, each project would be taken on its own. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just one comment on this. So there is a, a specific motion in the council packet. And I guess I'm looking for some clarification from the motioner on this. The specific motion in the council packet authorizes the letter of no objection, but also has other language in it related to that, you know, that the ultimate, um, approval related to this will come after a 408 permit is issued by the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as this being subject to subsequent approval of a license agreement for the encroachment. So I guess what I'm requesting is that the, the motion be clarified to include those aspects as well.
And as the maker of the motion, I certainly would concur with that.
And as the second, I concur as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good to go on that then. All right, we'll vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.6 is the certification of completion, final estimate and resolution of acceptance for the 2019 JV sewer and water extension project.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, discussion?
Uh, Mayor, George here.
Go ahead, George.
I believe this was a very, very fine project. You see that happening throughout other areas of the former Winona township. And, uh, the people are very, very happy that they have an opportunity to obtain this service.
Uh, Councilmember. Any other comments? Al, go ahead.
Just a comment that, you know, the, the processes have been changed regarding the, uh, payments for this. And I appreciate the city taking the steps necessary to recognize that. And going forward, I think it'll be a benefit to anybody else who, uh, has projects like this going forward. But I agree with councilperson Borzakowski that, uh, this is a very good project in the former Winona township. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Eileen. Eileen.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.7 is the plat review for Dave and Muriel Arnold subdivision.
I, Al Thurly moves to approve the attached resolution.
I am Michelle Alexander, second.
Motion by Al, seconded by, um,
Me, me.
You, yes, Michelle. But you don't make the motion, Michelle, it throws me off, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hey, it's first word, I know you're at large, but what can I say?
You gotta have it, Al, you gotta have it.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.8 is the plat review for the Echo Dale subdivision.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution and accept the three attachments.
George will second that.
All right, motion by Michelle and seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.9 is the Visit Winona Consultant Service Contract.
I am Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to enter into the five-year consultant service contract with Visit Winona.
Eileen, second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, George here.
Go ahead, George.
Someone just kind to, kind of explain this a little in depth. They are now going to run the visitor's center from what I understand.
Well, they run it now.
They already run it, council member. Um, there really hasn't been any substantive changes to this, uh, contract.
Okay, okay. It's pretty much the same group and doing the same thing.
All right.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.10 is the revision to the city's social media policy.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion, implement the revised social media, media.
Eileen, second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.11 is the City of Winona Professional Employees Association 2021 and 22 Agreement.
I am Michelle Alexander, would concur with the proposed labor agreement and memorandum, memorandums of understanding with CAOPEA and as to approve the resolution.
Al Thurly seconds that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.12 is the 2021 non-union wages.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve.
Al Thurly seconds that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al, any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, George here.
George.
Uh, what is, uh, an example of the non-union employees? I thought they either belonged to a labor union or else they were in CAOPEE. Uh, who would not, uh, uh, I guess, who would fall under this non-union wage?
Uh, mayor and council would be, uh, department heads, it would be, um, HR staff. Um, engineering, as Brian's reminded me.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's several.
Okay, I thought the department heads were under, uh, CAOPEE.
No, they're not.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.13 is the 21 employee life insurance benefit change.
I am Michelle.
I would approve.
Yeah, I think we had a motion by Michelle and a second by George.
George, you're talking for me.
What's that?
I'm picking on George for trying to talk over me.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.14 is the agenda management software agreement.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the proposal from East Scribe.
Councilmember Scholmeyer, second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Councilmember Thurly.
Go ahead, Al.
Uh, just a question, um, is this the, A, the only company that does this sort of software? And, um, reading through the proposal, uh, what are the proposed savings for the, for the city and the community of Winona for this?
So mayor and council, there are several companies that provide, um, agenda management software. This one we found to be the most integrated package and, uh, does integrate with our current document imaging system called Laserfish. It provides a better experience for the council and the public to be able to see the agenda online as an HTML file rather than a PDF. And after council meetings are over, it will link the video to the agenda. So someone wishes to see a particular item, they don't have to wade through two hours of a video to find the, uh, video or audio from, uh, particular discussion point.
Thank you, a follow-up question, uh, I assume then the cost is, is in our 2021 budget?
Uh, actually, this is in the current 20 budget.
20 budget, okay.
Right. It was planned for first quarter of this year, but we had a few other things, uh, going on this year.
Okay, well, thank you for the explanation though, I appreciate that and I'll support the motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.15 is an agreement with Winona County for the outdoor firing range.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the agreement authorized the mayor and city manager to sign. I just had to say that one more time, Mark.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
Uh, I, Pam, have a question.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, uh, so the annual payment to the county has increased from 2,000 to 2250 per year for the next quite a few years, um, and then up to 2,500 per year after that. Why is the cost increasing? I thought, uh, certainly a firing range is kind of a passive, kind of a passive place. It's, that doesn't take a lot of personnel or maintenance, does it? I have never been out there though, so I am curious, would like to know.
Uh, mayor and council, um, there are, there is some maintenance that needs to be done. Uh, bullets tend to hit, uh, some of the support structures for the, uh, for the range itself. The targets themselves have to be replaced. Um, and, and those do unfortunately get to be more expensive. My understanding is we purchase our own ammunition and we provide our own training. But damage that's done to the facility, we have to help pay to, uh, to fix it. Also, the, um, the ERT trains out there as well. And they do quite a bit of shooting. And, and again, more damage that's being done to the, uh, to the location.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.16 is the designation of the official newspaper for 2021. And the low bidder was the Winona Post with a bid index number of four cents.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the Winona Post as our official newspaper.
Al Thurly here, I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.17 is an amendment to the Winona State University Campus Parking Enforcement Agreement. And this would be to allow.
Sorry.
Enforcement of alternate side parking.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the execution of agreement by the mayor and city clerk.
George seconds that.
All right, motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Tonight, we'll start with Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things, I think, uh, first. So just want to let people know to just be careful on the ice out there. I don't know what's going on, on East Lake, Winona. And I'm not sure if something is happening, uh, out there that maybe we don't know about underground, um, as what happened a couple of years ago. Um, and because it's very unusual. In fact, in my 53 years in Winona, I don't remember the ice on both lakes not being frozen at this state. And, um, so it's very strange and very unusual. And the only time I remember this happening was, uh, when we had water coming in from the storm sewers, um, from the tunnel excavation and/or from a broken water main. So just wondering what's going on. And then lastly, I just want to, uh, say it's been an honor to serve on, on council with, uh, with my colleagues on the city council. And, and I want to acknowledge them, uh, despite our differences on many different, um, items. Usually we agree, on some we don't. But I want to acknowledge them for being civil. items, usually we agree, on some we don't, but I want to acknowledge them for being civil. And I think that's important for conducting the business of the community, for being civil and, and everyone considering what in their mind is the best thing to do for the community and maintaining that civility no matter the outcome of the vote. And I just want to thank them for allowing me to serve with them. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Michelle?
I just want to send condolences to the family of Bob Boulent. He died a little over a week ago. He was a long-term city resident and city employee, and he will be missed. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday. And I just want to send a thank you to Mark, Al and Paul. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve with all of you and you will be missed.
Okay, thank you. George?
I'm muted, George.
He's speechless, he's speechless.
Mayor, eight years ago, you and I both sought the open seat of mayor. And we had a very, very good campaign and we had a very, very good time as we went through our campaigns. It was an honor to have served with you as mayor. We have, we have accomplished a lot. And I was very honored by our city council to vote me in to serve as your council president, vice mayor for the eight years you have been in office. And I've really, really honored by that. And one thing I was going to tell the mayor that when he was campaigning, he was down in the fourth ward. And I asked him if he had a pass to get into the fourth ward. And he said, well, he was down, he says, I said, you know, you're in my territory right here. And then he told me, he said, you know, one person said to him that, you know, George is a good fourth ward councilman. And Mark's remark to that person was, well, you know, then George should stay as fourth ward councilman. So anyway, mayor, I took that as advice and the past two mayor races, I have decided to stay as fourth ward council representative and not enter the mayor race. So thank you for your service and it was good working with you before the meetings, during the meetings and even after the meetings. We, we had some good visits and we had a lot accomplished. So to Paul, my neighbor for many years, now he kind of scattered out, so, or scattered back into town, but Paul, I want to thank you and it was an honor to serve with you for the last four years. You were a voice for outdoor recreation, you were a voice for energy, and you did a very, very good job with that. And I specifically want to thank you for your support. Every time I came to you asking for support for people of the fourth ward, you were there to grant that support and thank you very much for that. And mayor as well, I want to thank you again too for your support of the fourth ward, the Sobieski Park Building, and every time we've had issues come up in the fourth ward, you were there to support them and help us out. So thank both of you people for that. Al Thurly, I have spent twenty years, of my twenty-two, serving with Al Thurly, not only on city council, but also on the Port Authority. And he was very, very good in both his roles. As proven tonight, he tries to represent all the people as possible. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't, but I think it's more can than can. But anyway, Al, it was an honor certainly to serve with you for twenty years. And I believe we had ten together on the Port Authority and you definitely made a difference and good luck to all you folks. And tonight, mayor, I am, I am going to yield my motion to adjourn to Councilman Thurly.
Ooh, thank you, George.
Thank you, Al.
All right, Pam?
So, so Al finally, finally steps into the seat of power, being able to, to adjourn the meeting. Well, I really, I appreciate what all of you have said and I, I have had a wonderful time serving with you, Al, and, and George and Paul and Mark. It's just, it's just been a great four years. I didn't mean George, I meant. George, your, your little frame lit up.
He was so good that it just carried right over.
No, it looks like we're not going to have a white Christmas, but that doesn't mean it can't be merry. I, I intend to get out in my car and drive around and, and look at all these lights I've been hearing about. Thank you, everyone. I'll see you in the new year.
All right, Eileen?
Well, I don't know how I can follow any of that, but I was very excited that this would be my last meeting as the most junior council member. I'll be the youngest one, but not the most.
Roll that in.
But I just want to thank Mark, Al and Paul so much for your service to the city. And it's been a real honor to have joined council while the three of you were serving. I've learned so much from all of you. And I, I hope that you enjoy resting and relaxing in the new year. And, you know, I wish luck to our incoming council members and mayor. And that's, that's all I can really say. Everyone else has really summed it up. You're all wonderful people and really, a really, really wonderful gift to our community. So thank you all.
Thank you, Eileen. And now our first ward councilman, Al Thurly, with the Christmas tie.
Well, I, I think I wear this every season at this time of the year at council meetings, so I thought this would be my last meeting and I'd wear a coat and tie and wish everyone, you know, happy, happy holidays. Before I offer my final comments, I, I do want to concur with extensions and expressions of sympathy to former city engineer Bob Boulent. He worked with my dad when my dad was in the engineering department. He has a long history of this city. Many of the infrastructures and permanent dyke systems that we have are a result of Bob's talents, so sympathy to his family going forward. Also, I do have a constituent who contacted me today about the worming house or the building that's a part of the Knott Valley Park. And he indicated that it looks like it might need some, some kind of TLC to make it function a little bit better going forward. And he didn't say it needs to be done right now, but perhaps between now and sometime this spring or summer. So if our manager would make that note, we could go ahead with perhaps some paint or whatever the building might need. But, you know, before, before I, I finish, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year and Merry Christmas going forward. But I want a final few words by saying thank you. Thank you to family for understanding my passion to serve as Winona's first ward on the city council. I thank you to the residents of the Winona First Ward for allowing me to serve with your support. And by my calculations, it's been twenty-five years, although they were non-consecutive, that I've served in this position. And also by my calculation, I believe I haven't missed a single regularly scheduled meeting. So if you take twenty-five times, two meetings a month times twelve months a year, that means I I'm ending my six-hundredth meeting tonight. And in, I'm really humbled to be part of participating in discussions and then making the decisions that keep Winona healthy, welcoming and successful. Some of those include the, the Pelzer Street Overpass, the Highway sixty-one fourteen and Pelzer Street redo, water and sewer upgrades, as we mentioned about the former Winona Township areas, upgrading infrastructure in the entire city as well. And helping to Winona, to establish Winona's sister city relationships with Masada Japan and Bitov, Poland, along with other council members, city staff and community volunteers. You know, making good decisions means having staff to advise, recommend and answer questions during councils' regular and special meetings. And over the years, I've served on council. Those folks have been consistently great, even as staff changes occur. I remember some of the council members and mayors, including Mayor Sloki, Miller, Peterson, Mark, thank you. Council members, Deb Saliards, Dieter Millamaka, Tim Breeza, Dwayne Bell, Jerry Craig, Debbie Craig, Doc Call, Paul Double, Paul Scholmeyer, as well, as we conclude this meeting tonight as well, and I, I'm just really honored to be a part of this great city and hopefully be around for a long time. So I thank you and wish everyone a Merry Christmas again and Happy New Year. So thank you, mayor, for the time.
Good, thank you, Al.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items. Approval of the minutes from December seventh, the final adoption of an ordinance to dissolve the Recreational Waterways Commission, an ordinance to amend license fee for massage therapy license, and a claim against the city by the insurance company on behalf of Kelly Ridner.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second, Michelle.
By Al, seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
And mayor, by the wonderful, good graces of Councilman Borzakowski, our council president, I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Al and seconded by Michelle, adjourn. We'll vote by roll, what?
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Yeah, I, I guess. I don't want it to end, you know, I'm sorry.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
I, I guess I don't want it to end either, Al.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
I want to think about it. No, I.
And Councilman Scholmeyer.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Good night, good night, and yes.